Good evening, everyone. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to come and share my thoughts with you this evening. And honestly, I wish it were the other way around. I wish I was listening to you and trying to understand what your concerns and what your wishes were for county government. But let me just say in opening that I was asked to throw my hat in the ring about, well, four months ago now, make it July, by my party. And I had never really previously considered running for a political office, but here I am. I guess I'm a politician now. But what I'll tell you is my idea of a politician is one that is a servant of the people, not the master of the people. And so one of the first things that I'll do when elected to County Commissioner in District Two is I'll institute town hall meetings. I'll hear what you have to say. I want to understand your concerns. I want to understand how you prioritize the services that Boulder County might offer. And maybe we haven't, we're doing some things we don't need to do, and we could spend the money in a different way. So that's my idea of what it is to be a politician, particularly in local government. If we're not listening to the people, we're sure not delivering what the people would like to have us deliver in our capacity as county commissioners. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Speaking next is Claire Levy.
Thank you, and good evening. I want to thank the Niwot Community Association for hosting us. And it's, I wish I could say it's a pleasure to be here with all of you. Obviously, there's no one here. And I've missed seeing people through this campaign. What I love most about running for office is getting to meet people where they are. And I want to be a county commissioner for everybody in this county. But that means people in the mountains, people on the plains, people in the north part of the county and the south part of the county, people in the east and the west, people in unincorporated and in incorporated Boulder County. Being a county commissioner means listening to the needs of everybody and taking all points of view into account. I have a background as a land use attorney. I practiced law for 25 years. I represented Jefferson County, their planning commission and the county commissioners on land use issues. I then ran for the state legislature and was elected to represent House District 13. Served in that capacity for seven years and worked on a lot of issues that I think are important to the people of Boulder County. I also served on the Boulder County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee and on the Housing Authority. And I currently serve on the City of Boulder's Housing Authority. So I'm steeped in a lot of the issues that I have heard from voters as I've talked to them throughout the county. I look forward to the conversation we're going to have this evening, and I look forward to hearing from you. If you'd like to reach out and email me at claireforboldercounty@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Up next will be Cindy Kochen.
Number one, it's great to see people in three dimensions. And as I was thinking about this, that we're three dimensional, I thought of the flatlands, which we in the mountains can see down here on the flatlands. And if many of you are as old as I, you remember the Flatlander story in math class? Do you remember that? Well, I know you guys are three dimensional now. You're not, women were, do you guys know what I'm talking about? Women were sticks and men were polygons. But anyway, we're all three dimensional now. A little bit of my background. I am an educator. I have taught all levels, preschool through college graduate school. I've taught migrant education in this county. I was a finalist for the Impact on Education Award. I have a PhD in teaching reading. So I know academia and all of those issues we have in the county. I wrote for the Daily Camera on the editorial advisory page. I was unpaid in that role. So I just enjoyed contributing to community issues. Many of them I had to research because I didn't know what they were about, as some of the questions you've given me today. I'm a co-author. I, with Janet McCabe, rewrote the Baby Swim book. I am an entrepreneur, started the shower scene. And I have worked with Democrats and Republicans down at the legislature and in this county. I see myself as very bipartisan. I know agriculture. My first job was detasseling corn. My priorities are that we need to change three commissioners to five. That's my first priority, living in the mountains. I hear these tales again and again. My other priority is to get out of that stodgy courthouse and get out. And I'd like to limit the meetings there in the courthouse and be all around the corny.
Thank you, Cindy. And finally, with the opening statement is, a final opening statement is Marta Lutman.
Good evening, and thank you to the Niwot Community Association for bringing us together here to have a conversation. I appreciate that. And of course, everybody who's participating, because we are aware that we are also competing with another big debate this evening. So thanks for tuning in. I have lived in and at Boulder County for the last 28 years, working, participating, parenting, teaching, and volunteering in a lot of different sectors. And I'm using that experience now to respond to the most common question over the last 23 months that I have been on this campaign trail, listening, learning, and helping to create solutions. That question is, what is the role of county commissioner? And that's what we need to talk about tonight as well. It is allocation and distribution, and also a more transparent, is one of my goals, and an accountable system that distributes that $430 million here in the county, as well as the support and the management of 2,000 Boulder County employees. My name is Marta Lutman. I am running for the District Two seat of the Board of Boulder County Commissioners, and I invite you to get involved, to participate. Our ballots are coming out this week. This timing is fantastic. If you haven't read, received yours yet, you still have time to do some of the research. The foundation of the ballot is our local elections. We need to right now be calling to our neighbors, calling to our coworkers who we are not seeing right now because of coronavirus, checking in on them, making sure that they complete their census, and make sure that they vote. And so I invite you to look at my website, which is martas2020.org. I will be working hard, the same way that I have for over 28 years in this county, to bring community, voice, representation, families' perspectives, to address our LGBTQ community in a new way, to bring our indigenous community, our people of color, our Latino community, and represent Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for those great opening statements. So since we've been doing open forums for the last 15 years, the number one question has always been subdivision roads. So it should come as no surprise that question number one is about subdivision roads. And I'll be reading from prepared text here. "In the late 1990s, Boulder County unilaterally changed their responsibility for maintaining public roads and that in the decades since have been pushing for local residents to assume the burden of paying for their upkeep. Very few areas of unincorporated Boulder County like Niwot have implemented a solution to address the long-term care of their streets. Most citizens living in areas without a plan feel like the county has abandoned one of its core responsibilities. What would be your short-term and long-term plans for maintenance of public roads, specifically subdivision roads and local access roads? How much of your plan should be paid for by local communities and how much by Boulder County?" The first speaker to answer this question will be Claire Levy.
I have to say, I'm not surprised at all to see this question come our way. And because I'm aware that it's a real sore spot. And so let me use the question as an opportunity to talk about what I think are some of the core functions of county government. The county commissioners are the government for places like Niwot, unincorporated Jamestown, Ward, all of the people who live outside of city limits. And for those people, they are the only source of services. So I'm very aware that this is a sore spot. I'm also aware that the proposals that the county has put forth for shared responsibility have not worked and haven't been taken up. I actually do view it as a county responsibility to maintain roads in unincorporated Boulder County, but I think that the issue is how to pay for it. And I've had conversations with at least three different boards of county commissioners going back to the 90s about why they made that decision, what they were thinking, and why is the money not there to maintain these roads? Now, I've been told that there isn't money in the budget, but there can be money if it is set aside. So it's a question of priorities. And I think what the county is going to have to do is slowly start building a fund to do this, because I think it is completely reasonable for people to expect their government to maintain their roads. It's just a core function of government.
Thank you, Claire. Our next speaker for question number one is Marta.
Great. So yes, the question on subdivision roads, so what Dave shared at the beginning is true. We did not see these questions until we got here a few minutes ago. But the theme is not new. And in my conversations with community members over the last couple of years, specifically about this position, that conversation has come up. And I've heard a variety of different suggestions. What is really interesting to me is the way that, from a commissioner's standpoint, how can I help broaden out the outreach to come up with real solutions? Because from speaking with a couple of residents who suggested in their subdivision specifically, they've already met with their neighbors, and they've already started having conversations about how they are willing to bring in some of the funding, because as Claire already mentioned, that's the big question. And it was the question prior to where we are today, and it will be a bigger question in 2021 and certainly 2022 after COVID. So the funding question really is. So how do we get creative? My commitment, and I've told this to many residents around unincorporated Boulder County who've had this question, is that I am absolutely prepared to bring this conversation back to the table with the three county commissioners, because it's not a unilateral decision for any one commissioner, but to bring it back to look at, one, what are the creative solutions that community members, and this is an invitation for Niwot specifically, folks to stay engaged and stay involved, to take the time to meet with the new commission after January of 2021, and know that I will be willing to have that conversation, bring it back to the table, and look at how we're going to create some of those pieces. I also know that there is a budget that addresses road maintenance. But there is a discrepancy about what is maintenance, which pieces of the maintenance are going to be taken care of specifically to these concerns. And so there's still work to do, and I'm willing to move that forward.
Thank you, Marta. Our next speaker is Jim, Jim Crowder. Very interesting topic. If you'd like a more fulsome presentation of my point of view about this, you can go to Crowder for Commissioner, my Facebook page, and there's a video there, and I describe my feelings about it. But let me just say that I think it's a total dereliction of duty on the part of the county. The county established the way that these roads were to be built. They approved the subdivision. The subdivision developer put the roads into county specifications. They dedicated them to the county. They're now the county's property. That means they belong to the people of Boulder County. And then the county just unilaterally decided they weren't going to repair them. And in fact, the county tried to assess property owners in all these rural subdivisions, and they got pushed back by the Supreme Court, said they couldn't do it. So that sometimes happens when you have one-party rule, you know, for as many years as we've had it here in Boulder County. There just haven't been differing points of view available. And so a lot of what flows up from staff just gets kind of rubber stamped. Now, I know from having done some research that it caused, that there are two things about roads. You have to maintain them. You have to repair them. So you put a little hot patch on where you've got a pothole or something. You have to grave the gravel roads. But you also have to grind and completely repave all of these subdivision roads that are now in such terrible state that they can't be repaired. They need to be remade. And that's a question of priorities. And so we spend 35% of our budget on Health and Human Services, and that much on roads. And oh, by the way, that's roads, bridges, bike paths, and walking paths throughout the county's open space. So it's not all going to roads even. So from my point of view, the first thing that I would do would be to try to change some of those priorities and set aside money so that we're able to repave, when necessary, every 20 years or so, these paved roads we have in Boulder County and subdivisions. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. And final speaker on question number one is Cindy Kochen.
Well, this sounds a lot like doom and gloom to me. It's one of these, gosh darn it if you do, darn it if you don't. It's going to cost a lot of money. As James said, things have fallen into a lot of problems. But I couldn't help but laugh to myself, because I live off Sugarloaf Road, a county road. And I have seen those big trucks go by when I have just spent three hours shoveling out my mailbox, and they come by and they cover it again. So anyway, I had to laugh, because I have county-maintained roads, but I still use my shovel out there. On a more serious note, it is a really difficult problem, because as we've all said, it's a money issue. Now, the county does have a $440 million budget, and it's a matter of priorities. On the other hand, you can't let the maintenance go so far that you have a huge hole to climb out of, and that's what's happened. The other issue that I see is that the court has come in, the Supreme Court has come in and said, hey, county, you need to do this. And hey, county, didn't do it. And I scratched my head, thinking, how can that be? The court has told you to do something. How are you getting around this? So it's a real deep problem. I have not been privy to the sessions that the commissioners have, and they must know something I don't know, because it does not seem fair. It seems counterproductive, productive, to let things fall into disrepair and then have to come back and save them. So it costs more money in the end, rather than just to have solved the problem. So I'd like to see it solved. I'd really like to see it solved ASAP. I'd like to get this court issue out of the way. The county has been commanded to do this, and they need to step up to the plate and figure it out with their $440 million budget.
Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to question number two, Niwot is not immune from its own local controversies. And in the beginning half of last year, we had one. This question has to do with the Niwot Rural Community District zoning regulations. Following the 2019 development moratorium that was unilaterally implemented by Boulder County Land Use, new regulations were established within the Niwot Rural Community District, which include a floor-area ratio limitation, setback and height restrictions, alley and conditional use restrictions. So the questions are, what have you done to familiarize yourself with these issues? Are you willing to work with Niwot businesses to modify these regulations? Do you think this is more of a land use staff issue or something that the Boulder County commissioners should get directly involved with? Our first speaker is Cindy Kochen.
First of all, I love the uniqueness of our county, or the uniqueness of all the little, little communities. I'm more Natterland. I see a lot of Allen's Park people, because I'm right off the peak-to-peak. I see Niwot, Jamestown, Ward, Erie, all of these little places, and they're all unique. And that's the beauty of this county. So I'm really pleased to see that Niwot has, I think probably, one of the most further-along of all these little communities, in seeing that they maintain their historic nature. So I love that. I went back to my hometown, where I grew up in central Illinois. We always had a gazebo, the band shell. I went back, it was razed. I couldn't believe that this happened. It had been there over 100 years. So I do value what you're doing here. The second major issue, well, what have I done to familiarize myself? I did call a local realtor. I called a friend who lives in the area, and I looked online and found what was out there was quite dated, because a lot has been happening in this area. So I don't feel like I'm as up to date as I should be. I'd like to be involved. I believe the county commissioners should be involved. That's why I support five commissioners, because there is so much on the commissioners' plate that they can't get into it and handle each issue well. With five commissioners, especially if we dedicated them, we could get into it well and finally solve some of these problems in a better way. I like that the NRCD is moving ahead. I like, and I'd like to tailor all of our little communities so that we tailor it to their needs. That means there has to be a lot of local input, which means it's a lot of work, and we need five commissioners so that we can handle all of that work.
Thank you, Cindy. Our second speaker on question number two is Jim Crowder. Thank you again. You know, to me, there's a very different point of view about the role of the land use and other planning staff at Boulder County. They're not elected by anybody. The county commissioners are elected by the people that live here, and it should be top-down. The county commissioners should hear from their community, what the people that live here would like to do, and then they should tell the land use planners what the people want, rather than having the land use planners impose it on us unilaterally. And that's exactly what happened here in Niwot. I don't think anybody in Niwot voted for those regulations to change. And I've got friends that live out here. I'm in the mortgage business. I see the impact of this, and it increases the cost of housing, and we've got an affordable housing crisis in Boulder County right now. So when the county comes in and some 28-year-old land use planner decides it's a great idea to impose these kind of regulations, and then the cost of housing goes up, and everybody rings their hand about not having affordable housing, we need to have land use regulations that allow us to do modular homes on land leases, so that people can actually afford to buy a house. That's what I mean by affordable housing. And we've got affordable housing problems all over the county, not just here near Boulder. So my advocacy would be for the people, and I would be in a position to tell staff, this is what we want to do, and go out there and implement it, rather than have staff tell me what we ought to do. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Our third speaker on question number two is Marta Lutman.
Question, and my understanding from talking with folks here in Niwot and also with this community association previously earlier this summer, is more focused on the business piece and kind of that commercial development and the history of the moratorium. And two things, when I look back and I've talked to some of our current commissioners and look back historically online and things like that as well, is that that moratorium may not have been the best method of addressing the issues at that time. And my understanding is that the commissioners have been really clear about that. Maybe that wasn't the correct approach. And I share that, because for me, listening to community members and making sure that everybody really is at the table in some way, we have a really huge opportunity now in the future, after kind of recreating what it's going to look like to do this type of business after COVID. And this is a great example of totally virtual. How do we include that and make some of these hybrid approaches so that more folks can participate in the process, so that we can make sure that the reach is greater when we're talking about these really important questions? So the questions around just setbacks and regulations and restrictions, conditional use, land zoning, etc., I have a background in real estate. I've been using my real estate license, which is really limited use license of law, since 2006. Prior to that, I was in the housing industry and from a mortgage capacity. And so these zoning regulations is something, one, that I'm very familiar with. And I've also worked with small builders and other folks who have gone through these different building planning processes. So I know that that comes in. I've heard that from community members. And there are opportunities for us to look at and make sure that we're including all business owner voices, both folks who are newer to our community and folks who've been here for a while. I do believe that it's a land use staff issue primarily, because as a CEO of any corporation, it's not our job to micromanage, but to support and make sure that they're prepared and have the information they need.
Thank you, Marta. And our last speaker on question number two is Claire, Claire Levy.
Thank you for the question. And again, no surprise, I know that this is a bone of contention here in Niwot. I think this issue is a classic example of good intentions that went awry. And my understanding of the rural community zone district concept was for these communities that, Elrato Springs being one of them, Jamestown, the Allen's Park area, that have a distinct character, to try to find a way for them to be able to define what they would like to see in development, so that that character is preserved, so that they're just not covered by generic land use regulations that covers the whole county. So to me, that sounds like a great idea. It sounds like the problem was in the implementation of it. And I mentioned that I was an assistant county attorney, and I did land use in Jefferson County for many years, and then I did that in the private sector after I left the county. And the number one thing you need to do is broad stakeholder engagement and get buy-in. It just does not serve any purpose to adopt a set of regulations that nobody is happy with. So it sounds like something broke down in the stakeholder process. It sounds like maybe there were unintended consequences from, you know, that weren't realized until they were put in place and people actually started trying to work with them. I've seen FARs go way wrong and produce bizarre-looking buildings, because you're trying so hard to fit within the setbacks and the ratios. As far as whether it's a commissioner or a staff issue, you know, the commissioners set the policy, and they provide direction to the staff for what the staff should do. The commissioners don't write the regulations. They shouldn't. But they should set the policy. They should ask staff to go back out, survey the community, find out what's not working and what is working, and then make another run at it.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to question number three. I'm going to put a little context in front of this question. The Boulder County commissioners are filled by three seats, each one representing one of three districts in Boulder County. The city of Boulder is in District Number One, and Niwot is in District Number Three.
that Elrato Springs being one of them, Jamestown, the Allen's Park area, that have a distinct character to try to find a way for them to be able to define what they would like to see in development so that that character is preserved, so that they're just not covered by generic land use regulations that covers the whole county. So to me, that sounds like a great idea. It sounds like the problem was in the implementation of it. And I mentioned that I was an Assistant County Attorney, and I did land use in Jefferson County for many years, and then I did that in the private sector after I left the county. And the number one thing you need to do is broad stakeholder engagement and get buy-in. It just does not serve any purpose to adopt a set of regulations that nobody is happy with. So it sounds like something broke down in the stakeholder process. It sounds like maybe there were unintended consequences from, you know, that weren't realized until they were put in place and people actually started trying to work with them. I've seen FARs go way wrong and produce bizarre-looking buildings because you're trying so hard to fit within the setbacks and the ratios. As far as whether it's a Commissioner or a staff issue, you know, the Commissioners set the policy, and they provide direction to the staff for what the staff should do. The Commissioners don't write the regulations. They shouldn't. But they should set the policy. They should ask staff to go back out, survey the community, find out what's not working and what is working, and then make another run at it.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to question number three. I'm going to put a little context in front of this question. The Boulder County Commissioners are filled by three seats, each one representing one of three districts in Boulder County. The city of Boulder is in District Number One, and Niwot is in District Number Three. Sitting the 2016 election, there was a total of about 170,000 votes cast. 60,000 or 35% of those came from within the precincts within the city of Boulder. So the question is, each seat on the Boulder County Commission represents one of three districts, yet the election is at large with the entire county voting to elect each seat. Smaller communities such as Niwot can feel disenfranchised due to the metropolitan areas outside of the local district dominating the election process. So the question is, would you support and advocate for residents only within each district voting for their representation to the Boulder County Commission instead of at-large countywide? If so, would you be willing to put this measure on the ballot without going through the petition process? The first speaker for question number three is Marta.
All right. This is a really important question even on a bigger scale, and I say that because one of the initial reasons that I chose to run for this particular seat was about this feeling of lack of representation, and it has been confirmed over the last 23 months out and about, talking with folks in person, obviously initially, and then virtually from mountain communities to the east Boulder County, to different sectors within our communities, specifically monolingual Spanish speakers, and it's connected to the piece that most, the fact that most people don't even know what the County Commissioner does. So there's a bigger theme of how do we really incorporate folks and invite folks to be part of this process of representing communities. That's one piece. The comment about disenfranchisement is right there along with that same theme of. And so the question's about would I support district voting, kind of like we do for wards, for example, in our state council races? Yes, absolutely. And I also supported the conversation of moving from three to five Commissioners based on that same conversation that I had heard from different community members who felt underrepresented or unrepresented. The other question is talking about whether to put that on the ballot without going through the petition process. So I feel really strongly that for voters to have the opportunity to make their decisions and vote is critical, and getting the conversation started to find out if other Commissioners would be supportive of that is going to be something that I don't even know. I haven't had that conversation with the potential 2021 Board of County Commissioners, but I absolutely do believe it needs to be brought to the vote. I know there was a petition process last year that unfortunately wasn't successful, and so what I'm looking for is the survey data because the current County Commissioners really did ask the nonpartisan groups to go out and start surveying to find out how that would work. So I'd like to see that data to determine if that's a possibility.
Thank you, Marta. The second speaker on question number three is Jim Crowder.
I just want to return to the road issue for just a second and say, I just want to acknowledge all you property owners out there that have been paying property taxes on your house for 40 years now, and the county hasn't been taking care of your roads. So in terms of County Commissioners, County Commissioners make roughly $123,000, but the total cost to the county taxpayers is probably on the order of $160,000 a year. So I personally don't support getting two more on there. We don't need to spend another $300,000. I think what we do need is to go to a direct precinct-type representational government. I am a huge advocate of that, and I feel completely disenfranchised living over in Lyons, and I feel the pain of all of the people who don't walk in lockstep with Boulder's points of view. I think we need a broader perspective on our county government. I mean, we're about as local as you can get. You need to elect people that will listen to you. You need to elect people that will take action. You need to elect people with significant experience that know how to find leakages in the budget, that, you know, have had administrative-executive experience. They know how to run departments. And basically, we've been under one-party rule now since 1994. So there hasn't been enough fresh air in the room for some of these ideas to take root. So thank you. I'd like to bring that to your county government.
Thank you, Jim. Our third speaker is Claire Levy.
So I want to start with the numbers and then go to process. So I'll accept the numbers, 35% of the votes total came from the city of Boulder. Probably for the Niwot area, the 35% came from La Pea and Lewisville, I'm going to imagine. Longmont has about as many people or maybe more. I think Longmont may have passed Boulder now. So I don't think Boulder really actually has outsized voting weight. The problem is that, so I went to a forum put on by the League of Women Voters about a similar issue early on when I was running, and you can't draw Commissioner districts with equal population in a way that would give the mountains or Niwot a Commissioner. It's just not possible. There's not enough population. So it's really a math problem. And so I think the issue really is the quality of representation. What do the Commissioners do who are elected? And I've shown, by the way, I represented House District 13, which spanned from Jackson and Grand County, Gilpin Clear Creek to the western part of Boulder County, that I represent everybody in my district. I made it a point to get to every single county multiple times, go to town hall meetings, hold town hall meetings throughout my whole district. So I think it's a quality of representation and an attitude more than a numerical thing. I guess I would also say on the last question about how the issue would be determined, that it can't actually be changed unless state law changes. As long as there are three Commissioners, they have to be elected countywide by statute. And I happen to think that's a good idea because I think we all need to be taking as broad an approach to all of the issues as possible.
Thank you, Claire. And the last speaker for question number three is Cynda Cochran.
Well, I see this question as two parts. Now, number one, you all know that I'm very strongly in favor of five Commissioners because I live in one of those outlying districts. And I don't think it's that there are bad people in the current Commissioners, but they don't know my problems. They don't know Niwot's problems. They don't know Erie's problems. They can't know all of that. So the first part of the issue I see is that it's simply not fair. And if you've lived somewhere else, you can say, it's not fair. Isn't it obvious? If you don't live somewhere else, if you live in more of the central areas, you don't see the problem. The second part of it I see is I don't see it working. When you go around this county, you see a lot of things and a lot of beefs, and they're legitimate beefs. They're not just people complaining because they don't have anything else to do. And when there are three people and you look at what the County Commissioners deal with and you go down all of the subjects, the roads, the budget, the public health, the blah blah, it's a lot of work. Now, you can have staffers. When I was a teacher, I had a lot of paraprofessionals, and they were wonderful, but the buck stopped with me. I needed to know what was going on with each one of those kids. They were all different, and I needed to know everything about them. I couldn't say, hey, Ms. Smith here, you've been working with Johnny. Can you tell me what I need to tell that parent I need to know? So I am very strongly in favor of five Commissioners. It needs to be more fair, and we need to share the work and spread out the work. It may be a little more money, but it'd be worth every penny because we have to rule this county well. What's the other question here? I would definitely be willing to put it on the ballot without going through the petition process. I believe the members should be dedicated. I think we can come up with an algorithm that works. It might be a math problem, but we can do it.
Thank you, Cynda. That concludes the question part of our presentation this evening, and we're going to finish with a closing statement where each of the candidate can speak as a closing statement or speak as a rebuttal to any other topic that has come up. The speaking order will start with Claire Levy.
Well, thank you. I want to thank the listeners at home for their attention during this conversation, and I want to thank my fellow candidates for joining me here and for having a really interesting conversation about the future of this county. I think the theme for the evening has been those parts of the county that are overlooked. And I guess in closing, what I want to say to the voters here in Niwot is that I don't think you'll feel overlooked with me as a Commissioner. I will make it my business to be all over the county and represent everybody, listen to everybody. I will be a hands-on Commissioner. That's the way I've always been. I also wanted to circle back, I guess, to where I should have begun and just tell you what the priorities for my campaign have been. I'm passionate about the environment, about open space preservation. Affordable housing is something that I've been working on for the last almost 10 years. So that's another important issue for me. And the last issue is equity, both with respect to income and with respect to race. And so those are things that I'm going to be working hard on as a Commissioner in addition to dealing with the nuts and bolts of government. One other point I wanted to make about the number of Commissioners and representing wards or districts is that most of the things that the county does are really county-wide. The county runs the jail. The county provides social services. The county is stewards of the open space. And these things are throughout the county. We all have a stake in it. And I would really hate to see the Commissioners just burrow into just focusing on the issues of their district to the exclusion of the interests of the county as a whole. So thank you again for your attention. I hope I'll earn your vote in this November election.
Thank you, Claire. Speaking next with a closing statement or rebuttal is Jim Crowder.
Well, if you've been to my website, creditforcommissioner.com, or my Facebook page, creditforcommissioner.com, you can quickly learn that my key issues are good governance, which means let's very carefully allocate the scarce resources that our taxpayers entrust us with and spend the money where it can get the best, effective, and most desirable outcome, as told to me by the people that live in Boulder County. I'm a big bug on roads. It bothers me to know in that the county has been a complete breach of trust on our roads. And I think that the county owns 10 square miles of open space right now. Maybe that's enough. Maybe we could shift a little bit of money to maintaining roads. And the last issue for me is affordable housing, and by that, I don't mean the 889 units of property, rental units that the Boulder County Housing Authority owns right now. I'm talking about housing that people can afford to buy and to begin to create some wealth for themselves and their family. So I've just got a different point of view about a lot of this stuff, you know, and I disagree with some of the things I've heard. We agree with each other on other things, but with respect to direct representation, I think that's the foundation of our government and part of the reason why our country has done so well since its inception. We believe in representative government. And so if you can't hear the voices of people in a certain part of the county because the voices of another part of the county are too loud, then you don't really have representational government. If we have to go to five County Commissioners to get to representational government in Boulder County, then that's what we have to do. I would like to see three County Commissioners each elected in their own precinct. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Speaking next with a closing statement or rebuttal is Marta Luterman.
Thank you so much for bringing us together tonight, Niwot Community Association, and giving us an opportunity to talk and have this conversation. I want to, I agree with Claire that some of the theme here is talking about just representation and how do we incorporate our incorporated, unincorporated sectors of Boulder County as well as the east Boulder County and our mountain communities, et cetera. And that's something that I feel really confident that I can bring my experience and my skillset to help us do as your next District Two Boulder County Commissioner. I'm a first-time candidate, and my background is in banking, finance, in mortgage, in real estate, in teaching, in consulting. I have specifically worked on three projects around community engagement. One was around predatory lending after 2006, our aging adult population, and our monolingual Spanish-speaking population, or the folks in our region that were truly attacked during that time, I mean predatory lending. After the flood of 2013, I was on the ground as a Resiliency Specialist working for the city of Longmont on a state data assessment. I wrote a report for the state specifically addressing the gaps and barriers of access to those resources with local government after the flood of 2013. And I just completed recently a national facilitation with a cohort here in Boulder with three other national groups addressing community engagement, addressing what we're talking about right now. And for us in Boulder County, that work was specifically about how we bring cultural brokers to our decision-making authorities in Boulder County. And so all of those pieces together, outside of just being a parent, being a volunteer, and being part of our community, will help us address the issues that we're all concerned about. And my commitment is to keep the door open and work with everybody in our community.
Thank you, Marta. And with the final closing statement or rebuttal is Cynda Cochran.
Well, to finalize here, I'd like to tell you what I would hope to bring, not past achievements, but the kind of person I am. I'm old. At least I'm older than I think maybe many in this room, and I've had a lifetime of endeavors, and I think it's brought me some wisdom throughout the years. I take great pride in being open-minded and in seeing all different phases of what's going on around me and being open to that and what it's telling me. I really value bipartisanship. I detest the polarization that's going on now. I have demonstrated that by working with both parties, and I value that, and I think that's where we get to the truth, when we see where we each come from and we really look to each other for finding out answers. I believe in doing your research, and that research includes seeking out people within our communities, seeing what they have to say, seeing what they think, seeing the lives they have lived, and bringing them in, going out to where they are and aggressively pursuing their ideas. Getting out of that stodgy courthouse, I've said that before, I feel it emotionally. We have to move out in the community. That's where our community is alive. I'm a creative problem solver. I have a patent in my little business. I totally believe that we need five Commissioners, and I would strongly push for that. You've heard me bring that up several times today. I would push for that. I know not everybody believes what I am believing in, but I would hope to try to convince them with some logic. I'm a determined seeker for the win-win solution, and I believe most problems do have a win-win out there.
Thank you, candidates. Well, that concludes our forum for this evening. I want to specially thank the candidates who agreed to come here and take these questions that were specific to Niwot. I'd like to thank the Left Hand Grange, which we usually have many more people than seven inside of for an event like this. Our technical director is Derek Curd. I think he did a great job. Our timekeeper was Kathy Kaler, and I've been instructed that I have to thank myself, David Limbach, for being the moderator. Most of all, I want to thank you, the voter, for taking the time to get yourself informed so that you can make an informed decision. Lastly, next time you're in downtown Niwot, stop and take a look at the Veterans' banners that were hung yesterday in celebration of Veterans' Day coming up next month. Look for more details of that on our website at www.niwot.org. Thank you and good night.